I'm calling to order the Woburn School Committee meeting for August 11th to 2020 at 7:30 PM. If we could all stand and salute the flag, please. Aye.
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do they do this at the beginning of every school committee meeting? People could mute. I would really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Could the Superintendent, Secretary to the School Committee, please call the roll?
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Kissel.
Here.
Mr. Phillipsitt.
Here.
Mr. Morenne.
Present.
Dr. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Crowley.
Present. Okay, so we're here and all accounted for. I want to state that this is a remote meeting still conducted under the executive order issued by the governor on March 12th, 2020. We are permitted to conduct public business in a remote setting due to the pandemic, the virus pandemic. We're conducting this particular meeting in a remote session because we are having public comments and because we had a member who was traveling. Other than that, we have had two consistent in-person public meetings. We're just doing this for the convenience of the public. So we'll jump right in. First thing on the agenda is, I guess we'll do the approval of records if that's okay with everybody. Do the approval of records. Does anyone have any action on that?
I'll do my motion to approve. I think it was July 30th and what was it, July 21st?
July 21st and July 30th.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any deliberation on that motion? Okay, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Philipsitt.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so that motion passes. Those minutes are now, will be published for those meetings. We will now move into public comments. Is Mayor Galvin here?
I am, Ellen. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, School Committee members. Good evening. Thanks for all the work that you're putting in and the responsibility, the awesome responsibility you have tonight moving forward for the community and for the children, the teachers and the parents. It's really been quite a ride for all of us. I want to recognize Matt, Matt Crowley, his staff, Wendy, Mike, Dave, all the principals and all the hard work that they put in. I mean, this has, it's been a really challenging time. And I want to say, you know, working with Matt and Chairwoman Crowley through this process, it's, you know, everybody's really stepped up and been accounted for. It's been a lot of work. And I just want to recognize all of you and Matt, your leadership has been pretty intense through this whole thing. So I want to thank you for what you've done. And I know the School Committee seconds me on that, so thanks, Matt. But I'm here tonight again. I know this is the School Committee's decision, but I wanted to weigh in and let you know how I feel. You know, I've been on the steering committee with Matt and Ellen and Wendy, Mike, Barbara Locke and Dave Dunkley and going through a lot of the issues. And what I can say is that the most important thing is that we provide for the safety of our students, parents, grandparents, teachers, who are all going to be affected by the decision that you guys make tonight. And, you know, we all know we have the three decisions, the three different scenarios, which are part of the governor's requirement. So we're able to jump back and forth as needed. And, you know, my strong support, of course, would be, you know, we'd love to have full student activity. We'd all love to see that. But I think realistically, tonight, the best vote would be a hybrid. And that follows really in line with, you know, the governor's press release today, which I think everybody heard, which was very encouraging, really, to give, it gives the city a lot of flexibility to adjust as we need to between, you know, hybrid, remote. And at some point, it would be nice to do full. I know that's probably going to have to wait till the vaccine. But we've worked very hard, you know, between the School Committee and Superintendent to put the procedures in place, the protocols that I think we can, you know, effectively open up with the hybrid model, which would be the two days on and three days off. So I'm really going to urge you to vote on that tonight and go with a hybrid. You know, to talk about some of the things that are going on in the city right now. The governor came up with a four different dashboard and what to be looking at, whether, you know, you're a red light, yellow, green or white. And, you know, at this point, and everything can change, you know, we don't, we all realize we don't control the virus. The virus goes at its own pace and its speed. But right now, you know, right now, we're at that point where we've had 19 cases over the past two weeks. That's about an average of 1.3 a day. So that would put us in that, the full hybrid model. And again, that can change. And that's why I think it's important that we, you know, we're making our decision based on what we see on the ground today. And, you know, you're making a decision. But what we see on the ground today is that we're in a good place as far as, you know, the governor's standards that he'd like to see cities move, cities and towns move. So, you know, as I said, those stats can change, but we have put in, you know, we put in, I think, the protocols with the, you know, the distancing in each classroom. If they're wearing their mask, which they will be, the good hygiene, the social distancing. And we've also been provided a significant amount of money from the governor. We can't, I can't thank him enough for his support. You know, I know people may think differently, but he has provided us the support that we can adapt and adjust on the fly as need be between remote, hybrid and full when we need to. So we do have the financing and, you know, we'll be watching the statistics and science on the ground and making our decisions. But right now, as we see it, we're in a good position. And I'll urge you all to be adopting the hybrid when we start the school year. So happy to answer any questions or I'll just jump to the sidelines. I know you have a busy night, but.
Thank you. I really appreciate those kind words, Mr. Mayor. And I want to state that right off the bat, you know, having an agreement about those Chromebooks and getting those Chromebooks in order back in June was absolutely essential for any plan that we have. And having the city's support is just so helpful. And thank you for meeting with Matt, well, speaking to Matt just about every day, but also meeting with us weekly. It's just nice to have the full city's support as we go through such a difficult time. So thank you for that and your transparency and your support.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor while he's here? No, you have something else on your mind, folks?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, Matt, did you want to say anything? No?
No, I just thanked.
Okay, great. All right, so that was our first public comment. That counts. We will now move, if anybody else would like to speak in front of the School Committee, we will now hold a 20-minute public comment session per School Committee policy because we do need to get on with our business. So if anyone would like to speak in front of the School Committee, they can chat me in the chat. It looks like Ms. Jacinda Felix-Aro. Would you like to speak?
Hi, sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. Don't worry about it. Totally fine.
You know, technology here. Thank you so much.
We know, it's okay.
You know, I just want to know from folks, we're sitting here on this Zoom call because, as you said, we cannot, by order of Governor, meet in person. How are we opening schools in person? I have grave concerns for not only our children and our students, but also for our faculty and our staff. And, you know, I don't know if the mayor's still here, but, you know, I appreciated his comments about all the hard work that has gone into this. I myself am working to open a school, a college, which is different, but I get it. I'm deep in it too. So do appreciate the work that everyone is doing. And I know that sometimes we make decisions that sound good but aren't. I'll say it like that. But I just don't think that, looking at the way the virus is working and knowing that there's no vaccine, that this is not a safe thing to do. So I just want to know how we are holding this meeting online, yet still encouraging or thinking about opening schools. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. I just want to remind folks that public comment is a one-way communication. Unfortunately, one of the things about public comment is that the School Committee cannot respond. I will say generally that the reason why we are not meeting in person is that we can't hold more than 25 people in one space. We have met in person, but then we have the issue of if we want to allow public comments, we need to hold a Zoom call for that purpose because we can only broadcast when we're in person. That's not a general response to anything, just a reminder. If anyone else would like to speak in front of the Committee, they can just chat me right now.
No, I don't want to leave.
Okay, I'll give it a couple of minutes.
Oh, it's right here, right next to me.
If I could just remind people to be, I know it's, I'm a broken record and I apologize for that, but we just, a lot of people. Thank you. Okay, Kenee, you.
Kenee, you. It's all good. You don't even have to try. It's fine. My name is.
Udeviki?
Yes, you got it. Thank you.
Okay. Pronounce it right. It's important.
Yes, no, no. Thank you so much. Yes, so my name is Kenee Udeviki and I have a daughter who's entering sixth grade at the Kennedy Middle School. And we just recently moved from Cambridge to Woburn. In addition to being a parent, a single parent, I am also a school adjustment counselor at one of the middle schools in Cambridge. And so this is, this topic, obviously, is something that we're all grappling with, but in particular, I have been really struggling with the city of Cambridge around their decision-making. And one of the things that I wanted to address is the mention of the fact that we have very low numbers right now in Woburn in terms of people with COVID. But I also want to make note of the fact that we have people, teachers, who don't live in Woburn, who will be coming into the Woburn schools to teach. And what does that actually mean? Does that mean that they, who knows what communities they are coming from? Perhaps their communities have higher numbers. Anybody who's worked in a school knows that it's going to be extremely hard to set parameters and safety measures in a classroom setting for especially young children, but even middle school age and up, to keep their masks on. Last week, I ran a program, an outdoor program with about 15 kids. And even in that setting, I was constantly having to remind kids to put their masks on. I think that asking teachers and asking students to come back right now into a building where there may be poor ventilation, circulation of air, perhaps windows can't open, is simply a wrong move. It's unsafe. It is irresponsible and it's dangerous. I want to urge you to consider the fact of going full remote and similar to the state kind of phasing in and looking as we continue on throughout the year to perhaps eventually looking at hybrid and then perhaps coming back full in person. But that we really base that on safety first. I, as a school adjustment counselor, I completely understand the social emotional impact that it has had, the pandemic has had, quarantine has had on young people. I worked many, many, many long hours with young people who were experiencing all kinds of stressors at home. It is not something I want to go back to in terms of working from home, but I also know that that's the safest thing to do. We can look at the numbers in southern states and of course, you know, their states, they took different safety measures and opened up much earlier than us. But those numbers in terms of young people with now COVID have significantly gone up. And that's because they returned to school. I think that we should use neighboring cities and towns as examples of what we should do. And those that have chosen to close, I think, have made really smart decisions. I will be choosing not to send my child back to school, even if you go into a hybrid model because I, as a single mom, depend a lot on my mother, who's 75 and helps me with my daughter. And it just would not be safe for me to have her exposed to the various germs that are in a school building and then have to be with my mother while I have to work. So thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And I do hope that you consider a remote model to start with and then possibly phasing in. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that public comment and feedback. Megan Chapman?
Hi, thank you. Well, make sure you can hear me. My speaker was a little, mics were really strange a little earlier. First, I just want to say thank you. I won't take a lot of time thanking you because I know we have more people who want to speak. But really, I appreciate all the heavy lifting you guys are doing and how much you are trying to weigh on both sides and all sides and everyone's opinions. And I just want to echo what the last speaker said. I completely agree that the, starting with fully remote, with an eye on, hey, if things are going great, let's move toward hybrid instead of starting at a, what feels like a, I've lost my word, compromise. It might be, it definitely sounds like a safer decision. And I just want to agree that in-person learning will almost always be superior for our kids with social skills, in-the-moment teaching, physical safety checks, collaboration, there's so much more. But who can learn if they don't feel safe? And we hear so much about how staying home is traumatic for our kids. But Desi's given schools instruction, as I understand it, to prepare for when, not if, your district will have positive cases. And I haven't heard any discussion, significant discussion in this realm about how traumatic that's going to be for our kids to have one of their classmates or teachers fall very ill, possibly die. I mean, do we have plans for sending people or students or teachers who don't mask home? And then what does that look like for bringing in a substitute? I appreciate Mayor Galvin and Governor Baker's point of view on hybrid learning, what it looks like and why it would be good. But I'd really like to hear this group give incredibly specific information to all of us on what do bathroom breaks look like? How often are the bathrooms going to be cleaned? How often are the handrails going to be cleaned? What products are we using? What are the procedures that the staff is going to be using to clean things? What's it going to look like on a rainy day during lineup? We used to go in the gym and all the kids would gather there. What's that going to look like? What will the quarantining plan be if a teacher is exposed to a student who tests positive? Is the district going to tell us? Because it looks like at the moment that it's not going to be required, but I'd like to know what Woburn's going to do. And I'd like to know when and how the district will notify us, at what level of exposure would we find out? Where will students and teachers store their personal items, especially during winter? What will PPE look like for all the teachers, especially special ed? Are they going to have the masks that are clear in the mouth so that the kids can actually see more expressions? What are the cleaning, I asked more about the process already, but what, where can students remove their masks? At what point in the day? How many minutes? I just haven't heard enough specifics. And I feel like if you guys haven't discussed them publicly, then what are we deciding on? So what happens if a student refuses to mask? And there are still ventilation issues as far as I know. What the last speaker said, what do we have enough fresh air coming in without question to every single classroom? Because otherwise, that classroom shouldn't be used. And what will hallway traffic look like? Are we going to have pictures like from Georgia where there are so many kids bumped up against each other, shoulder to shoulder? And what does, you know, before school and after school exiting the building look like? Are they all still going out one door? I just really would like, encourage you to share with us real specifics. Because I know that you want to make the very best choice possible. I do. I know that. I just really want to encourage you to make the healthiest choice possible, which again, I think is a remote start. And then take care of our teachers, take care of the students, make sure that we can move forward. Let's see what the fall looks like. Thanks.
Thank you for that public comment and feedback. Lauren Kastaris?
Hi, thank you. I'll be quick. I just wanted to say, as a Woburn teacher's standpoint, I miss my students so much. And, you know, I can't wait to be back there with them. I feel like being there in person with them really makes such a big difference in their lives as well as our own as teachers. I did just want to thank Mayor Galvin for being here tonight. But I wanted to comment on something that he had mentioned, that the hybrid model is a really great model because students are in school for two days and then home for three. A concern that a lot of us teachers have is that the teachers are there every day. So where the children are getting a break from school and from whatever could be around them, the teachers are still there every day. And I just, I think that that's something that we really should consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment and feedback. Denise Mason?
Hi, so I have two daughters. I have a daughter at the Joyce and a daughter at the Goodyear. And I'm also a healthcare worker, so I go into a hospital every day. And I just wanted to speak in support of full remote option because I feel like I've seen the effects on COVID on children and on adults. And, you know, I don't want my kids going through that and I don't want anybody else's kids going through that. And I think that's, you know, although the percentages are low and the likelihood is low, whose kid is going to be sacrificed or whose kid is going to be the first to go through the ramifications of having this virus? And I just, I feel like people need to consider that. And thank you.
Thank you for that public comment and feedback. Michael Pryor?
Hi, everybody. First of all, I'd like to say, my name is Michael Pryor. I'm going into my 17th year teaching at the Joyce. I love the city of Woburn. I love the school system. The administration did a phenomenal job building a plane for us to fly remotely in March. And we flew it as best we could. I'd like to give the parents of the students of the city of Woburn a round of applause because your kids are absolutely positively phenomenal. I had 90 to 95% class participation every day. The kids showed up. The kids did assignments. I want to be back in my classroom more than you can possibly imagine. However, not like this. I live in Arlington. My daughter's a teenager at the middle school. And they had their meeting the other night. And I am also concerned about the ventilation system. And the head maintenance guy said the ventilation system would be great. Elementary schools would be perfect. The high school and the middle school would not be, the high school would not be, you'd have to go fully remote. The middle school could go in school, a hybrid, until you turn the heat on. I want to know what the filtration system does once you turn the heat on at school. Because apparently, if you turn the heat on at school, it affects the purification system. Now, the Joyce is probably the oldest school in the district, if I'm not mistaken. So our filtration systems probably aren't fantastic to begin with. But if you throw that on top of a virus that's going around, we have some serious questions we have to answer before we make this decision tonight. Like I said, I love the, I love the system. I love my school. I love the kids. I miss the kids. But going back, just to go back when we're not ready, I just don't think is the smartest thing to do. We know how to fly the plane. Let us fly the plane the way we started to fly in June and make modifications where it didn't work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that public comment and feedback. I have a person whose last name is Shild.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, okay.
It's Marissa.
Hello.
So I want to say thank you guys so much. I know how hard you guys are all working. I couldn't be happier to be in Woburn. This community is fantastic, both for the school and the city in general. I echo everyone everyone else is saying, you know, we all want the kids to be back, but we're living in a different world right now. And until there is a solid plan that answers all of these questions that can, to the best of our ability, make sure our teachers are going to be safe, to the best of our ability, making sure our students are going to be safe, we're not ready to go back. And coming from, being a parent with special needs kids, I haven't heard anything about how we're going to make sure those kids who really need a lot of extra support are going to get that. How can they be in two different classrooms? How are we doing inclusion? How are we making sure their sensory needs are met, especially wearing a mask all day? There's a lot going into this and I appreciate everybody for all their hard work. But I think there's a lot more work that has to be done to ensure that everybody involved can be at the safest level we can possibly be at right now. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that public comment and feedback. I, we have five minutes left. So basically, anyone that wants to speak before we close public comment.
Mrs. Crowley, could I speak? I messaged you in the chat, but maybe you didn't see it.
I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Hi, yes, you can speak.
Oh, thank you. My name's Nicole Kenny. I grew up in Woburn, ended up buying my grandfather's house and moved back to Woburn. Love the Goodyear. I've had a great experience there. My daughter wants to go back to school more than anything in the world. However, I have just a couple of questions and I'm wondering if the group as a whole is thought about. I think sometimes school committees, you have so much to think about. We have to think about everything that may be the little idiosyncrasies of the day are sometimes hard to think of. So I know somebody else said this as well, but thinking about how students will enter and exit the school buildings socially distanced. And then who is going to be at those doors to ensure that the social distancing requirements are met? Do you have the people to be able to do this? Who's going to be responsible for escorting children to and from bathrooms or nurses' offices? And how are teachers going to contact this responsible party to ensure, you know, that we're not having a grand old time in the hallway? What's the plan for your high needs groups that require some serious compensatory services from the springtime going into now the fall? So you're going to have your service delivery providers that are delivering services for their current students on their caseload, but are also going to have to pick up where they left off in the spring? How can we ensure that each school is staying consistent with the curriculum expectations and the content delivery applications, such as the Google Classroom or CSAR, whatever it is that anybody's going to be using? How are students going to access their guidance counseling or their adjustment counselor services? How are the mask breaks going to work? When will they be? How are we ensuring that that doesn't turn into a complete nightmare of epic proportions? Who's going to be cleaning the classrooms after each lunch period? Or are the students going to be having lunches in the cafeteria? And then if you're going up into the high school ages, how are you going to do those passing in the hallways along with the middle school? And then how are you going to schedule your services, such as your physical therapy or occupational therapy, things like that for your really high needs kids? That those teachers and staff members have to get so incredibly close to these students to give them what they need? You know, you have students in the school district that are in diapers. You have students that have trakes that need to be touched. You have students that are in wheelchairs that need to be handled with such care. And I just wonder if all of the little bits of the plan have really been thought out to the point in which we can ensure the safety of these students, knowing that as a mom, as a dad, as a parent, we all want our kids back in school, right? That is 100 times easier than having these children home on a computer. But we want to do what's safe. We want to do what's right for the teachers and we want to do what's right for the students. And I'm not sure that we can guarantee safety for both parties.
Thank you for that public feedback and comment. I have one time for one more speaker, Jessica Bedoya.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jessica Bedoya and I've been teaching in the Woburn Public Schools for about 20 years. I'm very nervous to speak in front of so many people tonight, so please bear with me. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as a parent. I have two children that will be attending the Joyce Middle School. And I was in support of the hybrid plan for everybody until I took a closer look at it and began to see a lot of holes and a lot of concerns. I want structure for my children. I want predictability for my children and I want support for my, for my children. And looking at the plan, it looks like my kids will be face-to-face with their. And looking at the plan, it looks like my kids will be face to face with their teachers two days a week and then over the computer one day a week. Those other two days, I'm assuming that somebody else will be in charge of their instruction. How long is that instruction? Is it a half hour every day? I think that if we want consistency and we want support and we want to do the best for our students, it makes more sense to start remote where they're five days a week with their teachers every single day, where they can see their same teachers every single day, instead of making a plan to go back to school, bouncing back and forth, and then maybe ultimately becoming remote anyway. I think it's too many changes for too many learners and we want what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment and feedback. Okay, that concludes public session. We are at just about 20 minutes. So I'll now turn it down, turn it down. Turn it over to Dr. Crowley, who's going to give us a presentation on the plan.
Thank you very much. I have some slides to talk through to perhaps answer some of the questions that people raised, but to help to inform the almost 500 people that are on the call. Before I get to the details, I do want to sincerely thank all the families in Woburn who have taken the time to either comment tonight at the last public comment, the surveys, the emails. And, you know, certainly there's no good answer, and I think we all agree to that. But I appreciate the support and the patience that the families have shown throughout the pandemic when it be, when it came in March. I also want to recognize the staff, some of whom who spoke tonight and did a great job during the closure. That includes our paraprofessionals, our nurses, our secretaries and our custodians who have worked throughout the closure. Mayor Galvin started tonight and I want to thank him. He alluded to our close collaboration. We do speak very regularly, the city council and of course, the school committee for your support and guidance since the pandemic. And lastly, I want to thank my leadership team. I have a great team. I'm not doing this alone. We're pushing out a lot of documents. Hopefully, they're comprehensive and well done. You know, the principals at each school are gonna, are working with teachers at each school to build the implementation-based program at each school. I have a central office leadership team. Wendy Sprague with curriculum instruction, Bob Alcanata, finance and operations, Mike Baldassari, student services, Maureen Ryan, special ed, Gen J technology.
So you're going to put your chairs closer to here.
And Courtney Young, who's elementary curriculum coordinator. So again, I'm not doing this alone and I appreciate working in a community like Woburn where we can have real conversations and support each other through what otherwise is a, is a very difficult situation. What DESI asked us to do, and I, I took this slide from the, I was on a call with the commissioner this morning. So the next couple of slides, I screenshot and implemented them into this. They asked us to come up with a continuum of fall reopening. And this is what people have heard, that in-person with new requirements, the hybrid and the remote. And that's, that we did that. We submitted to DESI on July 31st. And tonight, our charge is to make a decision as to which model would be best. From the commissioner's call this morning, one of the things he pointed to was the Johns Hopkins University coronavirus testing site, which indicates that Massachusetts is equal or below 5%. And so as a state, I believe, we're just under 2% as of this morning. This is what Mayor Galvin indicated. The governor had a press conference this afternoon. And this is brand new today. And so I'm not able to answer significant questions because it was just released. But you can see it's red, yellow, green and unshaded. And so the DESI expectation for learning model is predicated on cases. And so as I know it, as of right now, Woburn is green. However, as the mayor indicated, that can change at any point in time and we have to be flexible to flip in and out of any of the models. When we built our plan, we solicited feedback from parents as it related to our online performance last year. And just because there may be folks that were not on last meeting, our plan is to issue devices to all students, iPads to our youngest learners and Chromebooks to those that can use a keyboard. We will have consistent learning platforms, whether it's CSAR at the younger grades or Google Classroom, Google Meet. And we will be organized and predictable in our schedule. I, I heard Mr. Pryor's comment. We did build a plane while flying. And I, I think he's right. I think we did a great job together, but I think we can do better. Our intent, whether in-person, hybrid or remote, students will be working approximately the same amount of time that they were, would be, whether they were in school as we knew school prior to the pandemic. This was the proposed hybrid plan that people are alluding to. It's the cohorts where we would cohort families predicated. The first mechanism would be alphabet. But we know that it's not always going to be a perfect split to try to arrive at a 50%. So cohort A would be in school Monday and Tuesday. Everybody would be learning virtually on Wednesdays. Teachers would actually be working from home on Wednesday so the custodians could do a deep clean of the building before the next cohort came in on Thursday. Cohort C, our high needs population, would be coming in four of the five days. I'm going to run through a few sample schedules so people could understand what it looks like. Please know the key word here is sample. And we, these are things that we're going to work through, depending on the model selected. But I'm very, very comfortable with whatever model is selected, that we're going to provide a great education to all of your children in the Woburn Public Schools. So for example, the sample elementary hybrid would begin with the first group in on Monday. Everyone would have a meeting together. There would be time spent on ELA. And I want to pause here because each building is going to push out a building-specific plan. I heard that as a question. We know that kindergarten students can't stay focused, say, for as long as fourth or fifth grade students. But we tried to build it in blocks that would allow for flexibility predicated on the age of the students. Morning breaks are built in, as are tech breaks if, if we're remote. Going down, you can see math, writing, afternoon break, and then social studies or science in the latter part of the day, with the closing meeting done for all students at the end of every day. I know this page is busy. I, I get dizzy looking at it myself, but this is a sample elementary remote. And again, I just wanted to share it with the public so that you can see that what our intent is, should we go remote, is a full, robust, rigorous curriculum. So we'd begin with a check-in. There would be some synchronous time. Students would be turned loose, so to speak, to, so that they're not staring at a computer. One of the things we do know is that looking at a computer screen for six hours a day will not work for anybody. So there has to be time to introduce independent work and time for check-ins with teachers and students throughout the day. Again, here's the tech break and snack. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to build a snack into my day, I think, moving forward. So again, the specials would be, would be worked in this way as well. And down. So there's really a robust curriculum that would align with state standards to allow for our curriculum to move forward and the district to, not, to be aligned, K5. Again, keyword sample, middle school hybrid. The periods are a little longer, but it's a straight eight-period day. This would allow for all students to see all their specials every, every time they had a special. And the, it's the same idea with the cohorts in one day. Everybody would be remote. And then the second cohort would come in on Thursday and Friday. A sample middle school remote, it, it's very straightforward. Again, periods one to eight every day. And one of the things and the reason for this, and you'll see it at the high school too, is we were asked to develop plans that would be able to toggle back and forth. And so what I asked the principals to think about when they developed their plans was to be able to do that. So in other words, there wouldn't be this huge shift if we were to have to go from remote to hybrid and then back to remote. People would understand the plans to the extent practicable that we would maintain some structure and consistency regardless of what plan we're in. At the high school, again, it's the cohort model. The, the periods you, you might see are a little longer. They're 70 minutes as in the sample plan. This would reduce the number of transitions. In the high school, obviously, the high school is our largest population. About 1,300 students there. So if every student opted to come back, you're close to 650 students. And so we would have to figure out staggered passing times. But the 70-minute block time would allow for mask breaks to occur in both synchronous and, and remote learning and check-ins to occur in that 70-minute block. One of the things we did learn from the spring was that the older the students, the better they could handle the remote. And so one of the, the pressure points at the high school was the cafeteria with that number of students. So this plan would call for students to do a grab-and-go lunch and then be remote for a period in the afternoon. The sample, the high school remote, the big difference here, in theory, would be the time of day this spring. They, they did start the day a little later based on pediatric science, which says teenagers like to sleep in. The day would extend a little later, but you'd wind up with the same periods, same amount of period, length of periods in the remote model. And so I know that was quick and I know it was a lot of numbers to throw at people. We do have a very well-thought-out multi, multi-tiered plan that we want to release as soon as possible. We have thoughtful plans about all of these models. We understand the metric that was just released today. We also understand the world that we live in. And so we are fully prepared to implement whatever model is selected to best meet the needs of all of our Woburn Public Schools students and families. Throughout the process, Mayor Galvin alluded to it. We've been working collaboratively with the WTA, having steering committee meetings weekly throughout this, this summer. And we'll, our intent is to continue to work with all stakeholders, including families, to try to best meet the needs of all involved. Understanding, of course, I understand this very well, that there's no perfect answer. Other than return to school as we know it or knew it. You know, we are in a new world right now and this is a decision that really is, is not taken lightly. And I appreciate the time to sort of share models of the, of the planning. I have many members of my administrative team on the call with me. So should there be any need to ask questions that I'm unable to answer thoroughly, I can happily defer to their knowledge. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Just to clarify, you are going to release a comprehensive public plan? Do you have a timeframe on that?
My hope would be to release the plan tomorrow.
Okay. So is, is the reason why it's not in people's hands now is because the school committee simply hasn't approved it yet? So why would you send a detailed plan out without the school committee?
That's right.
Okay. All right. So the questions about specific PPE and protocols and everything like that is going to be in contained in this plan, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. All right. So questions from the committee to the superintendent?
Oh, I, I need you to run in and get a drink.
Dr. Wells?
Yeah, so just so we could be clear, superintendent, could he just give his recommendation for his, in his staff's plan choice?
Well, to answer you, Dr. Wells, my last recommendation was a hybrid model.
Yep, yep. And you're going to stick with that?
Well, we're prepared to implement whatever plan the committee votes. I think they're all great plans.
But my question is because you and your staff are more closely attuned to all of this than any of us. And I think the committee, at least I am looking for a recommendation from the administration about which plan they think best serves the students.
Well, we prioritize the, the hybrid plan because of the social emotional connection.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions for the superintendent? Yes, Ms. Cormier?
Thank you. I'm assuming that this is going to be in the building-specific plans, but as far as locker use and whether it's spacing out between the cohorts, I feel like that's a place that kids will congregate. So is that something that you can speak to or would that be something more building-specific?
It's going to be a building-specific model, but I do know that the, the plan is not to allow locker use.
And who, as far as the remote, for when the kids, I know this has come up a lot. If the teacher's in the classroom for the first cohort and the second cohort, who will be doing the remote learning on the off, on the opposite days for those same kids?
Is Ms. Sprague, I'm going to have, I'm going to defer to her and see if this works. I can answer it, but I.
Sorry, I couldn't get my microphone to unmute. It wouldn't pop up. So that question depends on the level. At the elementary level, as I've said in the past, we do have plans for some of our support staff to be the folks that are providing instruction during the remote portion. That being said, Wednesdays will be the classroom teacher will have her group all together. So it'd be the two days that the other folks would be doing that. And part of the Wednesday would be collaboration and planning time. At the high school and middle school, we've talked about the possibility of using Google Meet, which will do a similar process that Zoom does, which will allow for breakout rooms. So the idea was if I was in person and I'm teaching my class, I've already prepared an asynchronous video or lesson that my home students would be doing. And I would set up Google Meets in little breakout sessions or even individually. And so then when I have my class working independently, I can bounce into Meets that would combine students that are in my classroom in front of me with students that are home. I hope.
Yeah, no, no, that's great. Thank you.
I just want to clarify the answer. So in a hybrid model, it would be taught by teachers and then the other two days it would be support staff?
At the elementary level.
And what, and what's the definition of a support staff?
It would, it would, those folks would be comprised of our content specialists,
Oh, okay, okay.
and coaches and our Title I teachers.
Okay, thank, I'm so glad I clarified that because I didn't even know what that, what that definition was. Okay, so I just want to say this because I get this, if you don't mind, Ms. Cormier, I'm just going to clarify this, that the first two days would be taught by the classroom teacher. And then the, the third day, Wednesday, would be the classroom teacher remotely. And then the last two days would be a support person, which is a content specialist or, yeah, that type. A licensed person.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Lipsit?
Thank you. I have a few questions. The first is, and I watched the governor's press conference today. The metric that he used was very specific to new cases over a certain period of time. And, you know, based on And, you know, based on what he had to say and what Commissioner Riley had to say, it seemed as though that was the primary metric that they were using. I'm wondering from school administration, what other metrics you would consider when looking to move from one model to the other? Is new cases over a rolling 14-day average, is that the gold standard? Or are there other things that you would look for either within particular schools, community-wide, statewide, that would, that would make you consider moving model to model? One, I mean, one thing that has been bothering me throughout the process, not due to what the administration has been doing, which I think has been, has been fantastic, but more from external guidance, has been a lack of a really clear understanding of what the benchmarks are to go into hybrid or remote or full in-person. So I was hoping to get a little bit of clarification on, on those questions.
I, I appreciate the question. I, I didn't get a chance to see the governor's, you know, press conference today. I can tell you that one of the things we would consider is what's happening in Woburn on a weekly or daily basis. And so I communicate, you know, as you just heard, if not every day, multiple times a day with Sidney Hall and Karen DeCampo, the Board of Health. And so one of the things you're asking, I, I'm not, you know, a, a medical person. And so I would look at clusters or significant growth, but you know, the metric, I, I need to rely on the medical people to make that determination.
I, I completely understand that and, and, and thank you for deferring to, to medical personnel on, on questions like that. I guess my other question related to that is, are there logistical issues within schools even apart from medical issues that might be, might be brought on by them? So for example, a teacher or two teachers have to quarantine for a particular period of time. Or, you know, God forbid, someone actually does become ill and hospitalized. But there are plans in place for individual schools or individual classes should they need to go remote over a period of time? How flexible are we not just as a district, but on a school-by-school or even classroom-by-classroom basis? Does the question, I'm sorry, does the question make sense? Because sometimes I have these in my head and I go with them. They don't always make sense to everyone else.
I think, I, I think you cut out a little bit right at the end, but I, I think you were asking if we have contingency plans, um, class by class or school by school? And I think that's one of the reasons why we asked people to develop a remote and an in-person as almost as, as close as they possibly could so that we could flex as needed. So if, you know, a group of, uh, like a second grade cluster needed to be remote for a certain amount of time, the curriculum mapping wouldn't go awry.
Okay. And this leads me into a couple of other questions I have regarding sort of the way that, that instruction is going to be delivered in a hybrid model. So I mean, as a high school teacher myself, one thing that, that, you know, I'm, I'm looking at is, is the ways in which the hybrid model for high school in particular, and then I did see Ms. Callanan on, on the call as well, and I wonder if maybe she might be able to weigh in a little bit. For teachers who are, who are delivering instruction in person, but also having to develop asynchronous lessons for their classes, I mean, I understand that some prep time for that has been developed toward the end of the day, but I, my understanding was also that that time could be used for small breakout sessions. So I'm wondering, um, you know, are we, in terms of what we're expecting of our high school teachers, uh, time-wise, are we comfortable with that given the restrictions that we may be working with?
I don't know if Ms. Frigg or Ms. Callanan want to, you alluded, I think Ms. Callanan is on the call, so she.
I'm here, I can answer that. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Lipsit, it is the best schedule that we can come up with, given the constraints and the situation and what we're asked for. Uh, I do have concerns about the time for planning and making sure that we keep all students on the same and rigorous curriculum when they're not able to be face-to-face with their teachers two days a week.
Okay. Thank you very much. And none of this should be read as criticism of any of these plans. I, I completely and fully understand the pressure that all of you are under. So thank you. Um, and so I have a similar question regarding elementary levels in terms of content specialists. I mean, one of the things that I think, you know, I, I understand that there were some issues that, that developed in terms of, of instruction in the spring. Maybe it was not as consistently as delivered as, as some people would have liked. I know that teachers worked incredibly hard with very, very difficult personal and professional challenges ahead of them. But that, that, you know, we, we had no bad. We, we went in understandably without a plan. So I guess my question is, one of the few things that I thought was really good, and I have a son who was in first grade last year, was the consistency, once we were able to really develop those plans a little bit more, the consistency of seeing his teacher every day. And so one thing that I'm concerned a little bit about when I look at the hybrid plan is having instructions sort of bouncing a little bit between three different kinds of instruction and understanding that we're trying to keep that curriculum as, as closely mapped as we can. So going from a content specialist to the classroom teacher remote, to the classroom teacher in-person or vice versa. Versus having a remote model where we would have, you know, the stability of one teacher throughout. And again, I, you know, we're fully understanding that, that we had to develop hybrid models, we had to develop remote models, and that this is the plan that, that we could come up with. Uh, I just wanted to get a sense from, uh, from, from either from you, Dr. Crowley, or from, or from Ms. Frigg about what you see as the benefits and trade-offs that we might have there.
I think one of the benefits is that we, we can have a, a group of teachers that can work together. That happened in the spring as well. You know, teachers did a remarkable job. And you're right, when we first did it, some of us stumbled, but once we were able to get our feet under us and created grade-level teams across the district with co-planning, people did a remarkable job with that. That planning will still happen by grade level. These folks are going to be assigned by grade level. They will be working with teachers at that grade level when they are in, um, in-person and, and sort of meeting them in their classroom remotely so that we're not putting more people, more adults into the classroom. So there will be connections that will be made, not unlike a child's day normally in school when they see multiple teachers. Those connections will be made. We're focusing on standards over the course of a two-week period so that we're moving through the standards and not getting stuck. Monday, Tuesday instruction is not going to be repeated on Thursday and Friday.
Okay. And my understanding from the schedule and from other communications we had is that specials, so art, music, those will be fully remote under a hybrid plan. So we're not going to have in-person doing art at the, at the elementary levels?
Right now, that is our thinking, again, because of the number of people that would be moving in and out of classrooms.
Okay. And so just, I, I apologize for taking up your time. Just a couple of other quick questions. I mean, you, some of the, um, public comments, you know, focused a little bit on some of the logistics and, and I thought brought up some, some good questions. So in terms of, for example, passing the hallways, especially at our middle schools and our high schools, um, could you speak a little bit to the traffic flow and, and what changes you might have made, what accommodations you might have made, especially given that we're dealing with, uh, you know, with half of our population when we, when we talk about hybrid or approximately half?
Sure. I'm going to, um, just emcee it right to Ms. Callanan, who's still, I believe, with us. But I will tell you though, and, and, you know, I know she's here. I think a lot of principals are here too and could answer, uh, you know, they've been working with their building implementation teams to figure out these exact questions. And I understand people have these questions. You know, these, these are details that absolutely need to be resolved. And so, you know, we need to figure out which model we're, we're going to begin with to release a plan that will answer a lot of these questions. But that being said, Ms. Callanan, sorry.
Um, I'll do my best to answer. I know there's a lot of questions in there, Mr. Lipsit, but, um, my facility director, my facility director and I have sat down and we are looking at, you know, placing basically directional arrows in the hallways. The hallways are wide enough, have two-way direction, uh, as long as the kids follow that. Like we, what was prior, previously said was we don't plan on using lockers. Um, and so they're cleaned out and they will be zip-tied because that would cause students to sit down or stop in the hallway. And, um, we are basically having to recalibrate every teacher duty as well as every other staff member in the building to monitor how many students are in the bathrooms at a time, because we can only have two students in the bathroom at the same time. So basically, um, we met with the building, uh, well, the facility director met with the building inspector today to see with the reduced number of students in the building, can I close down some of the bathrooms so that they're more easily monitored? Um, and then if we have a high-needs cohort in there, are there bathrooms that we can dedicate to them to be able to use four days a week that they would be escorted to and from with a staff member? As far as coming in and out of the building, again, I'll have to use every staff member available to help me with different drop-off, drop-off points and exit points and making sure that students are socially distanced, six feet apart. And as they come in and out, it is, it will be a challenge with over 600 kids in the building at one time. Um, and then that really is the reason for the grab and go lunch, uh, so that we cannot, without having a schedule that basically is revolving around lunchtime, um, we cannot effectively have students sitting six feet apart. They can't do that in classrooms necessarily and take their masks off safely. And so they would come down and get their meals and exit the building and, and take their meals with them as they go. And so I think I, I'm hoping I answered most of your questions, but if I left anything out, I mean, those are the things that we've looked at so far, as well as measuring every classroom to see what's the maximum number of dust that we can fit in there safely. You know, talking about is a 12, a 12-foot radius around a person versus a six-foot radius? Like, there's lots of questions that we're getting down into the nitty-gritty and trying to answer, um, as well as making sure that our teachers have enough space in the front of the classroom to be safely socially distanced, unfortunately, from their students. And then removing all extra dusts and furniture and anything out of the classroom within the next couple of weeks and storing them somewhere until, uh, we can safely all return to school. So that's just kind of, those are the things we've thought through so far. You know, I think it's pretty detailed and I, I tend to be a detailed person, if anybody. So I, I will think through, uh, you know, every single one of those potential caveats.
And again, you know, I thank you and I thank, you know, Dr. Crowley, the whole, the whole admin team, every principal, every teacher for all of the work that you guys have done. I mean, you're right, the, the, the details are overwhelming and the planning is overwhelming. And, you know, you are, you are doing incredible work and I thank you for it. Just one more question, then I will let my colleagues take the helm. And this has come up a couple of times. Have we received any guidance regarding lockdown drills and how we will handle those in a socially distanced setting?
I can say that we have not, um, you know, and I work pretty closely with the SRO in our building. And I would anticipate that most students have been through lockdown drills as well as fire drills, um, which will also be an issue and that we'll have to work through that, um, either by doing, uh, basically going through a mock discussion where you don't actually exit the building by flooding the exits because that is not safe. And so you can do that early in the year and then you could do an actual drill later it, you know, if, if the health and safety allows. That might not be the case with fire drills, but I haven't spoken to the fire department yet, so I don't want to speak to that specifically.
I can speak to that. I had a conversation with Bob Elkanada and Dave Dunkley this morning, and Dave is reaching out to the fire department.
Thank you very much. I will shut up now.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit, Mr. Kissel.
Thank you. Had just a couple of quick questions. What is, I noticed on the in-person part of the hybrid, the breaks at the different levels. So what would the students actually be doing at that point? When there's the different various breaks, tech break and lunch, obviously know that they'd be doing lunch, but in general, what would the students be allowed to do and?
For the in-person?
Well, you know, not a full in-person, but if we do the hybrid, when they're, when they're in the school at that point, obviously, they're taking the breaks, yes.
Right. So the teachers may choose to take them outside or to another location in the building that's potentially been identified. Again, this is all part of individual building implementation teams to determine what's available.
So when you say take them outside, obviously, protocol, six feet apart, kind of work, working out the way out to wherever they plan on going for X amount of minutes or whatever. When they go outside, would they be allowed to take the masks off? Is that part of the protocol?
If they are socially distanced, yes, that's part of the protocol.
Okay. I'm going to bounce around because I just made notes along the way. The ELL population, obviously, when they're, they're, um, doing remote, how are we handling, you know, uh, being able to, to work with them as well if, if they're doing, uh, on the remote days for anyone? ELL.
They will be assigned to their EL teacher and there will be work that we provided. They, they'll get work from their, um, classroom, their homeroom teachers or the, whatever course that they're in at the middle school and high school, they'll get that same work and they'll get the support through, um, their EL teacher.
Okay. And got off topic a little bit, but it's going to involve the lunches. Did, I know there was, with the subcommittee I was on with, uh, Bob Elkanada, the, the food grants, I know that we're talking about getting, uh, paid lunches or lunches being paid in full through a grant program. Did that happen? Did that come through?
As far as I, as far as we know, the USDA has not made a decision on extending that waiver past August 31st. That, we should be getting some information on that in the next week or so.
As you mentioned, grab and go as an option. So if that does not come through, what's our plan? Is it?
If, if the waiver doesn't come through, then that will be one of those nitty-gritty details that we'll have to work with the facility, uh, food services director in determining who's actually picking up the lunches and, and so on.
Okay. And I know, uh, most people are familiar with the, the term pods, they're popping up. Some are kind of high-end pods, I guess, where they're hiring teachers, three, four, or five different teachers for a half dozen families. And it's very expensive, obviously. There's also going to be a different type of pod, probably a different level where there'd be groups of kids in neighborhoods that just can't be left alone, whether it be K through five, whatever the age is that the parents feel comfortable with popping up, where there'd be almost a daycare situation, but for older kids. So a few parents that I talked to and many people in different districts as well, uh, mentioned, I'm not sure if we, we looked at this, maybe we did, maybe I missed that, uh, the, the population that can't be left alone or just the parents are working. Uh, and I'm going to bring up a point, in, in March, of course, the, the families that were laid off, um, and there was quite a few of them were, were home. They were able to, to, to be there for their kids. I think it's different now, if most people or a lot of people are back to work, um, they're not able to work from home, a lot of them. So we've got this population that's going to have a real tough time on those two days or three days being home. So have we looked at the, in each individual school with the extra spaces, since we're not doing these groups, uh, group settings with, with, uh, phys ed and so on, using the gyms, the libraries, the auditoriums to kind of, hate to use the word house, but get the kids to school by bus, they, on their remote days, and they would be able to be kind of monitored, to be a nurse available, obviously, that still get lunches, maybe at the tables and things like that, um, on those days. And then when they're in the classroom, that, you know, they're in the, the hybrid part. So have we looked at that from the standpoint of using all the spaces in the schools? And kind of working the, the day around that where the kids could be? Because I, I know through SSA, I think, I call in the subcommittee, it, it looked like at least 500 families that may be part of the survey. I don't know where the number came from. I noticed in their minutes, uh, we're going to have a tough time finding childcare during those times that, and they can't leave the kids home alone. So not sure, have we looked at that? You know, the gyms, the auditoriums, the libraries and using those for?
I can answer that.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, we have between four and 500 families that childcare will be an issue. When we're, if we're in full remote, there, there is.
I think I lost them.
Ace, obviously, that at the schools that could be accessed, but if we're in hybrid, there's no space. You know, that's the whole purpose of being hybrid. So next week, Adrianne Mendez Sheldon, myself, Ms. Frigg, Rosemary Donovan, we are going to be meeting with Bonnie Library, Julie Gage from the Boys and Girls Club, the new director of the YMCA. And we're just going to have a conversation, possibility of finding support for our families who are, um, challenged by child. Finding support for our families who are challenged by child. In other communities, there are places popping up where they're, they're providing childcare for a fee. And in, in one case. It looks like it's $80 a day in Acton. $180 a week in Hudson. You know, we want to try to find better options for our families if we can, but we have to do that in partnership. With other agencies because our personnel is going to be, is going to be working. And our spaces may be occupied.
But you, you mentioned, you cut out a little bit. I don't know if it was my end or your end. You said on, on the in person days of a hybrid model. What, what is happening with our gym, a library and our auditorium? What, what will be going on at those points?
Well, in the hybrid model, our spaces are going to be, are going to be used just by half the student body instead of the whole student body. Now there will be spaces that are going to be designated. For. You know, there's for safe spaces if somebody's symptomatic of any illness. And so the, the buildings are. Are going to be taxed. So I, I don't know that there will be additional spaces available.
All right, I guess maybe I'm still not understand. Are we having phys ed during the hybrid model?
Wasn't likely will be remote. At the elementary.
Yeah, at the high school level, Mr. Kissel.
It's built in. Schedule.
Right. But at the high school level, it's built into the schedule. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, students will be following their schedule at the high school. So if they have PE second period, they will have PE. And if they have art, third period, they will have art. And so those spaces will be used and. If we need more space, so if I, we divide the cohorts. And a class is 16 instead of 14. We can only fit 14 students in a classroom at the square footage, so they might have to use a space like the cafeteria. So. All of those spaces and, and or the auditorium, all those spaces, we're going to be utilizing just to make sure that we can socially distance the half of the student population. That's physically in the building. And all, and they will be following and attending all of their classes, which is different than the, the elementary model, right, Ms. Spray?
Yeah. And I think that's probably, I mean, I'm, I'm not really thinking the high school because obviously I'm guessing most of those kids could, could be. Home and, and not have a parent with them, but on the lower level, K through five. What's going on with that auditorium, that gym, that library?
It's likely. It's likely that the cafeteria and gym. Might be used depending on how, again, these are building based decisions for implementation. Given the constraints within each building, but it's possible that the gym might be used as a cafeteria space so that we can further distance students if they need to use. The cafeteria and the gym.
Okay. And again, we could tweak this as we go, but you know, my thought is if we had to feed the kids in the classroom so. That large group of kids could have a safer place, whether it be an auditorium, gymnasium or library. Instead of utilizing those spaces, I'm talking again, the K through five, you know, ages. If, if the worst thing that the kids had to do is eat in their classroom when they were there, but that other group is able to be there, then everyone kind of, it all works out for. Most people, I guess, but all right, that was just, just some thoughts. And on the food grant, obviously we're, when, any idea of, of when that will be? You think by next week?
We've, we've been promised that it was going to be in the first half of August and here we are, the first half of August, so. It could be any day, it could be next week. Hopefully we'll know something by August 31st.
Okay. All right. That's all I had for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Chisholm.
All right. I just, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the parents and the teachers need to feel safe and I know that it's, it's hard and no matter what we choose, people are going to feel uneasy about it and. You know, we're doing the best we can. And I think that it's very important that we as a committee, you know, with the administration, keep as much information flowing to parents that we possibly can. You know, sometimes they get inundated and say, oh my God, I've got four emails in the past three days, but. More is best at this point. Sometimes I always say less is best, but I think at this point we need to make sure that we keep. As much correct information going to the families. And I was on that meeting today with the commissioner. I wish some of the information that he gave to us was given a little sooner than he gave to us today, but at least we got it. And I did appreciate the fact that he spent the time with us and. Gave us the information and we're not alone, the whole state, the whole country is dealing with this and. People have pretty much the same concerns across the state, so it, we didn't feel like we were. Sitting, you know, flying this plane with no other planes in the air. So. One of the questions were from a couple of parents, if they do choose remote at the beginning because they're nervous, they don't feel it's going to work. If come, you know, middle of October, things are going well, can they convert back? Would that be something? We would allow. I mean, is that something, I mean, it would throw numbers off and I'm sure it'll throw. But will they, once they commit, do they have to commit for at least? You know, to mid year?
The, the quick answer is that there will be some flexibility, but it may not be an immediate flip back in because we need to make sure the numbers. Are aligned. But we are able to allow flexibility and are planning for that.
Okay. And I just, when we talked about the cohort C with the ELL and the high needs, maybe we could just explain some parents were confused as why they go four days and some kids would only go two. Just to make sure that we understand that that's, these are kids that really need the instruction and to see these teachers and. Whatever, but you can probably say it better than I could. Or if Maureen's on, she wanted to give a little ditty.
Dr. Ball, sorry.
Oh, Dr. Ball, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chisholm, you broke up.
The question.
The old rebels.
The question, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Yeah. So the question, it's just to, to provide a little context for who is in cohorts C and why they would go four days.
So yeah, I can give you, I'll, I'll give you the actual breakdown of that. So cohort C students are going to be special education students in the early childhood program. At the Shamrock and the Reeves. Students who are in the PELS program at the Reeves. That's for our children that have developmental delays or intellectual or neurological impairments. Our students who are in the RISE program at the Shamrock and the Joyce. Those are our, our children and. Young adults who are in the autism spectrum disorder. And they, they receive ABA services or applied behavioral analysis. Our students who are in the GAIN program at the Goodyear. And the ACE program at the Kennedy. Those are our substantially separate therapeutic inclusion. Classrooms. Our LEAP students at the AltaVesta and the Joyce. That's a language based program for. Students with, you know, learning disabilities and other related disabilities. Students in the transitional education program at the high school. That program provides. You know. Educational services and vocational training. For our high school students who have intellectual neurological impairments and. Some of them have some complex medical issues. Launch program at the high school. Which provides vocational programming for students who are between the ages of 18 and 22. And then the peak program at the high school. A lot of those students are in sheltered classes. Those students are really at high risk for potential dropout. And getting them reconnected with school as often as possible is really important. And then we have a number of students who are both English learners and. Receiving special education services. So any student who is classified. As both an EL student and special education, those students will be cohort C four days a week.
Just as though people didn't understand why some people, you know, were coming, some kids are coming four days. So just to clarify that these needs. And we just need to make sure that we, we meet that. And on the questions that the parents and teachers had on, on the buildings, I'm sure the individual plans that come from the principal. Dave could weigh in and maybe answer on those so that they would be felt sure that, that, because I know we have the. Ventilation systems all checked out and new systems were being put in at the Joyce. I don't know if that's been completed yet. But I know that was a work in progress and things are going to be handled that way. And I also just want to give a little shout out to his team that worked through this whole thing and have been a. In the school buildings, keeping them nice and clean and up to date through the whole pandemic that we have. And I do want to thank Cameron Di Campo, I mean, from the Board of Health. I mean, she sat with us on our meetings and she was a wealth of knowledge in which she was extremely helpful and. And sometimes we, we thought we had an answer, she'd throw us a curve ball, but. At least she was there and she was very helpful. And I think that that's, we have such a great partnership with her. I'm sure we're going to be able to keep the lines of communication with a number of cases and any outbreaks that we have in the city. So I do want to thank her for that. I, I just, in the bus situation, I don't know, we didn't really talk about that as far as, I know that that's a work in progress with John Devine since he has the contract and. That's going to be worked out and we'll probably have to know exactly how many kids are coming to school so we can pick them up if need be. But that is something I know is a work in progress and. Trying to get some answers for parents so that they feel as safe as they possibly can through all this, but. Those are my questions commented to this point, but I'm sure there'll be more as we move along. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Mr. Malrennen. Ask questions? Mike? Okay. I just had a couple of questions.
About now, Ellen, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John. I'll, I'll defer to John.
Oh, thank you, Mike. So can the superintendent complain to me, you know, what happens if a student's absent from remote learning? Do we have a protocol? What's, what's going to happen?
We, we, we. Introduced a plan last spring where we had a sheet. That tracked every kid to make sure that they were checking in. The first stop was a. Teacher and then it would make it to a guidance or adjustment counselor ultimately to the principal, attendance officer. And Adriana Mendez Sheldon. Our family community liaison went to many, many homes to ensure that students were safe.
Okay. So, and so there'll be a protocol, you know, normally they call the school. I don't know if that's going to still be the protocol for parents if their child's sick. We're going to release some kind of information to the parents about that.
I, I suspect it'll be a, an email or an online correspondence, but yes.
Okay, okay. Have you thought about a staggered start in terms of? You know, having maybe the elementary school go the first couple of days, see how things work out and then high, middle school, high school after that?
The, the, the answer is we've thought about. Probably almost every scenario you can imagine. And we, we can implement, you know, as, as the committee wants us to. To move forward. It's not, I would also say, sorry, Dr. Wells. You know, we've thought about not just elementary kids, but kids going into say sixth grade and ninth grades, some of our transitional grades. Entering prior to everybody in that cohort coming in at that same time.
Just worried if we go hybrid with the, you know, with the new situation with the buses, trying to get all the buses to every school, the first day could be kind of confusing. And if we went a staggered approach where we, let's see how it goes in the elementary. Make sure that works and move up and so forth. It just might be easier. But I'll leave that to you. There's been a lot of discussion about individual space. Government has hammered in the fact that six feet is required. You know, for us in the, in the world when we're moving about. I know there's been discussion in the schools, the state has said three feet. Where are we at with our school buildings with a hybrid plan?
We are. Close to six feet, if not at six feet.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Mr. Malrennen, did you have questions?
Actually, Ellen, I had a few concerns and questions, if you don't mind me taking the first second. First and foremost, we're up to 600 people here. They're kind of waiting to see if we're going to kick the field goal, go for the extra point. What we're going to do because they want to know what's, what the plan is. But before I get into that, I, I know there was question and concerns previously tonight's meeting about. The performance of the teachers in the spring. And I think Dr. Crowley said it right, you know? Flying the plane with instructions in your back pocket. I, I would like to say that. You know, these teachers in the spring. Really, really did step up. I mean, they were, they were handed a situation that no one expected. And they just pulled it off as. As any woman person would know that that's what our teaching staff. Do on a daily basis. That's what everybody in our buildings have done. Year in and year out, no matter what the circumstances are. And I just wanted to make that point clear. With that said, as these points and plans keep coming across our emails and text messages and different scenarios from different agencies. I say, well, you know what then? I, I even think I texted or emailed Dr. Crowley and said, well, if it ain't broke, why fix it? You know, just work on that remote plan, Matt, and you know. Make it better, better, you know, perform better, make it, improve it. And then I thought about some other situations as Dr. B just brought up. Those families that really, really need what our staff have to offer. Minimal as it may be, something in front of a teacher for some of these kids is all they're going to get, Ellen and members. I think. You know, the pushback from others tonight, well respected people in the community, well respected educators. Well. Knowledgeable community members. But I think to hear the superintendent say, let's riddle it down to each and every building. Here in Woben, we know our buildings are different. We know our population is different. We know our kids and our staff are different. We know our buildings have different issues. We know some only have a few bus routes. Some have dozens of bus routes and I know I'm rambling. But I think the point is made that we're stuck, just like Ms. Chisholm said, she was in on that webinar today. But the commissioner and others, we don't have a good answer. Dr. Crowley. If I checked off the box every time you told us there is no good answer. These people are losing sleep over what's going on for our families here in Woben. And I think if we could just move forward, the recommended, recommendation of the superintendent. I'm not saying to, you know. Let the cards fall where they may, but I still have so much faith and confidence in our staff, in our buildings, in our families. Because I know the children in our community will adapt. They will persevere over whatever this need is. I think if we can just make it all work as a community, we heard from the mayor. We've heard from a few of the community members. We're going to hear from teachers a little bit later tonight, I know. And I think if we could all just get on the same page. Make it go, you know, go for it. And then as has been stated by many people tonight, as well as the commissioner, the governor and. I don't know, maybe the Pope, who knows who else can tells us this things, but we can change if need be. We see something's going a little stray, a little south, well, you know what, Woben School Committee reconvene. Get our stuff together, make the change. We may find that we're right where we're supposed to be. Everybody's behaving well. Everybody's socially distancing. Everybody's following the rules. And that's been my problem leading up to our first day of school. Will people, families all involved follow the rules because there will be rules and without rules, there'll be chaos. I think if we can get people to get on board. Buy into the plan. Sit back, relax. We do have some time here in Woben with our waiver plus our later start. To make these plans to fruition by each individual building need. The principals have set up individual building teams to address. Almost everything. And you're right, Dr. Crowley, I saw some of those slides. I got dizzy. I got crazy. I couldn't understand any of it, but you know what? I'm pretty sure there's somebody out there with given time and energy could explain each and every one of those boxes to me. Or to any family that needed it and also in any language and any need that might be out there, it will get. Explained to a family member down the road so they understand it better than we do tonight. So. I, I don't really have any questions, Ellen. I questioned the administration earlier this week after they presented us. With some awesome ideas and awesome plans ahead of us. I had the purview of serving with Dr. B on the family support team. That team worked diligently. Covering every single topic we could think of and obviously like all topics.
Okay. Thank you for those eloquent words, Michael. Sorry, Mr. Malrennen. Dr. Wells, did you raise your hand again? No, okay. Anyone else have questions for the administration? Okay, I have a few. Dr. Ball, sorry, can you talk a little bit about how you, we're going to address mask compliance? I mean, we are asking children to put things on their faces all day. Could you talk a little bit about how you're going to do that on a behavioral, the behavioral aspects of it?
So in our, in our population of students who have social and emotional and behavioral challenges. We are starting off with a incentive plan for them. That's going to be kind of like a positive behavior. Action. We, we know, you know, coming into it that a lot of these students are. Probably not going to be interested in wearing their masks. So we're going to look at it from an educational standpoint. We are requiring all of our students to. We are requiring all of our students to wear masks. Even, we're asking even the younger students to, to be masked. If a student and, and they're also, you know, in the plan that we wrote, we also had to write in, what about, you know, staff? Because staff also have to wear masks. So what will happen is the student will be referred to the principal. And the principal has to, and we have to look at every case individually and see if there's any exceptions. There are certain exceptions where some students can't wear masks or they may have to have a face shield or some other apparatus. And so the principal is going to interact with the family and the student. And unfortunately, you know, we don't want to do this, but you know, students or staff who aren't wearing masks will, they'll have to go to remote learning. And, you know, we can work with, with any, any student and make plans for, you know, them returning to school when they can be masked. But this is a public health issue. And if, if, if they can't wear masks, then they would be in the remote learning protocol.
To your knowledge, the, the individual school-based plans include like a previewing of what the day might look like or what the classrooms might look like for parents to see things ahead of time or set expectations.
Yes, we call those setting conditions. And, you know, what we stated in the student service, the equity and student services plan was that we would actually be, you know, having some contrived methods for having our students know what things are going to look like before they come in. If you think about some of those classes in the, or, you know, our disabled students and young students that I was talking about earlier. You know, when they come back to school, they're going to have teachers who are wearing masks and maybe gloves or aprons and things aren't going to be where they were. So we're going to, you know, find ways to preview their learning environments. And we're also going to be, in the nine days of professional development that we have, we're going to be doing some PD with our teachers about, you know, setting up their spaces.
Uh, excuse me for a minute, I'm. Okay. And the, for the middle school model and the high school model, I know a lot of things aren't worked out yet. Because a lot of things have to be bargained with teachers as they set conditions, affect working conditions. But with the middle school model, is it for the hybrid, is it two days in person? And then what's happening the other days, the other two days, not the Wednesday? Is, are they receiving pre-recorded lessons? I didn't quite catch that.
Some of the lessons will be pre-recorded. Some of it may be assignments that are given while they are in person.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously we're not going to have teachers working double. Right, so. Okay, thank you. And the, the lunch, the lunch issue for elementary school students is going to be determined by the safety committee for each building. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, so if one school can do it safely, six feet, and another can't, then they might dismiss the children?
No, I don't think that'd be the case, but I think it may, may look different at each school. So some of the cafeteria sizes at the elementaries are, are bigger than others. So for example, the cafeteria is larger than the shamrock.
Okay.
And so we may need to use different space at the shamrock to, to maintain that six-foot distance.
I see, okay. All right, those are all my questions for now. Okay. Ms. Cornier.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to say something somewhat quick. I know we're getting late here. I've spent 10 years as a pediatric nurse practitioner in congregate care, so dual-potent facilities. Obviously, I've never seen anything like COVID-19, maybe H1N1 was close, but clearly not the same. And I've spent the last five months making my patients and my resident during this pandemic. I've been a part of the safe return to school planning in the Equity and Student Services Subcommittee. And I do feel strongly that we're on the right path to the safe return. If I didn't, I wouldn't feel confident among my friends, nieces, and other family members returning to school in September. We're not returning to school like we were in September of 2019, but I think that the administration has implemented protocols that will help mitigate the disease spread. And just like other illnesses, anyone who is symptomatic, we would expect to stay home and take care of themselves. I think this plan is sufficient and it may not be ideal for every child or family, but Desi is allowing parents to choose remote if we do go hybrid. I think that this is going to get worse in the winter months. I think we need to get as much in-person learning in as we can before this community spike that a lot of us are expecting. But I don't think that our schools are going to contribute to that. I think the protocols that we've put in place will continue to be bolstered as more evidence arises around this disease. I read the draft of the detailed safe return to school plan and I'm happy with what's been outlined. I think the administration is always answering questions and then unearthing more questions. We're clearly not ready to open today, but I think we will be in time for the actual opening in September. I know that Desi has recommended that the high-needs students be in person as much as possible, but that might not be true for every high-needs student. I can't make that decision for each of the 4,500 students that we have. But with the hybrid model and the option for remote, I think the parents and guardians are going to be able to make the best choice for their student and their family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cornier. Um, I, I, there were two surveys that were done and I'm reporting these from the top of my head, but I believe that the, the choice of hybrid for parents was around 79%. So 79% of parents that answered the survey would prefer hybrid. In the alternative, it's important to report that I believe the teachers did their own survey and it came out to a preference of remote at 63%. So I'm just reporting those as, as objective data for the many to consider.
Madam Chairman?
Yep, Mr. Malrennen.
Just a reminder also, Ms. Crowley, I know we always see emails and you receive public comments tonight. If you just could reference your computer there. And for the members of the people paying attention now, Ms. Crowley, anyone that emailed us or members of the committee, they'll all get forwarded to Ms. Crowley, the chairperson. She receives those and tonight she'll make a motion that they go on part of the permanent record on how she's going to do it. But, uh, Ms. Crowley, you can explain that better. Thank you.
Okay, so I received emails from the following people and then I'll accept a motion to enter them to the public record. Derek Genova, Valerie O'Brien, Corinne Genova, Evelyn Riley, Sue McNich, Monica Dattalo, Dina Borden, Renee Kiernan, Karen Dion, Karen Martel, Carrie Johnson, Allison Bennett, Melissa Greer, Nicole Doucette, Cara Dattalo, Michelle Broadbent, Kristen Keegan, Amy Martin, Amy Panacella, Bridget Myers, Kate Clayton, Michelle Merle, and Renee Preston. If I asked, and all of those emails should be in your inbox as you've received them all, I would make a motion for the
I'll make a motion that the letters, emails be entered into the permanent record.
Thank you.
On the, on the motion, Madam Chairman, just to let people know, you know, I think we as all school committee members got them. I did read them all. I responded to a couple that asked specific questions. But even if we didn't respond as an individual, I just want them to know we did read them and they weighed on the decision here tonight.
Thank you. And if a member, if I'm mentioning one that you didn't get, please let me know. But I'm pretty sure I was very careful making sure you got all of them. So, okay. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cornier?
Favor.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Ms. Lipsett?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes. Okay, so at this point, we have to come to a decision. Does everybody feel like they've had enough information from the administration at this point? Yes. Mr. Kissel?
Real quick question, and I think I asked it at one of the in-person school committee meetings. And Ms. Gregg answered it, but I didn't know if anything's changed. I know there are parents that, that are probably going to go, you know, if the vote happens tonight and we, we do go hybrid or whatever the vote is. If a parent wants to start off in a remote sense, but then seeing that things are going well, we hope, if, if we do choose this option, that they want to kind of jump in on the hybrids side. Is that an option for parents? Obviously, making a decision today could be, look different in October, late October, or even November or something like that. So do we have a, an answer for families that may want to make a decision to go with what we choose? And if they opt to, to change kind of midstream, is that, is that an option for them?
I asked that earlier, Mr. Kissel. The answer to that question was there is some flexibility. There's some, try to be flexible with that. Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up, Pat. But I, I had it as one of my notes, so I'll be honest, I was just checking up all my
Honestly, it's a very important question and asked a lot, so it doesn't surprise me.
You know what it is? I, I got some texts from parents that were, they must not have heard the question early. I apologize.
Right. It's good to reiterate things.
Yeah, and then the other piece is, is, is we, we say at some, where along the way, things going better, so we, we change our plan, but that we vote on for tonight or that aren't going as well. And it goes back the other way. What, what is that? And the, the word that I keep being asked to, to ask is what is that threshold? I know Dr. Wells mentioned that a while back. At what point will we make that decision as a committee? Do we revote it? Is it the superintendent makes that decision? How, how will that come down?
No, technically by statute and by law, the Board of Health is supposed to shut schools down for contagious infections. And here that we, that superintendent had, clearly has the authority to close schools, it's a close schools in snow days. So I, I would assume that the school committee should vote to alter the education plan from hybrid to remote, if that is your question. I think that the school committee should do that.
Madam Chairman?
Please, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, no, I, what I would suggest, again, you know, this, everything's a work in progress. But the administration work with the Board of Health and set some parameters. Or what would tip you to go one way or the other? I think it's easy to set parameters to pull back. I'm not exactly sure what the parameters were, would be to ever go full in person yet, because that's not clear to me at all. But I think there could be parameters set by the administration, working with the Board of Health to let parents know, here's what we're looking at. If things go this way, we're going to go, we'll go remote or et cetera, et cetera. But I think, I think that's probably the best way to do it, so that we upfront about it, rather than doing it as, you know, just on a whim. And I, I say that loosely because I know the administration wouldn't do that. But I think set things up ahead of time so that parents know, here's what we're looking at and here's how we're going to make our decisions going down the road. But that's something that they're not going to be able to say tonight, obviously.
And, and, Dr. Wells, thank you. I mean, today was the first day that we got any metric from the state. Relates to this pivoting from one model to the other. I'm also led to believe that it's going to be a weekly update from the state in conjunction with daily updates with the local Board of Health. And so, you know, a decision made today, we may have to change next week. I mean, it's that, that's the, that's the world we're living in. But I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with all of our plans. So if the decision's remote, we're going to do a great remote job. If the decision's hybrid, we'll do a great hybrid job. So, you know, I just, I want to say that because I have a great team. You heard from some of the building principals, there were some, you know, more nitty-gritty questions. I tried to keep it more higher level. And a lot of information will be forthcoming and to try to assuage some of the questions that people have as it relates to our return to school. Thank you.
Can I just address something that we haven't spoken to today, but we have spoken to in other meetings? Other group of students who will opt to go fully remote, no matter what our choice is, and stay that way. We had a meeting last Friday with the department and looked at four possible models for remote instruction that would be provided on a platform that may, a couple of them would not be supervised by our teachers, but would be supervised by licensed Massachusetts educators through that platform. And there were two choices that we would need to staff, but they would provide all the instruction for students for whatever, whatever courses they take. And we are looking at that as a possibility to do primarily at the high school and possibly into the middle school. Again, this all depends, we're looking at numbers of students who may opt to go fully remote, no matter what the decision is by the district. And we also need to look at the number of staff that we will have available to teach.
And the platforms that the state is offering, TECA and Greenfield, those are the virtual academies that have existed in the state for a very long time. They do follow the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Students who attend those, those schools do get Massachusetts diplomas, same as any student in Massachusetts. So that's the platform the state is authorized and it is, it is live instruction with teachers.
And those students would still be considered enrolled in the Woburn Public Schools. So that, we're not giving those students to another school program or system. They would stay enrolled with us.
But prior to this, if they, if they signed up for that, we would lose the enrollment, but now the state's going to allow us to keep it.
Correct.
Ellen, I have one more question real quick.
Yes, Mr. Kissel.
There are a lot of parents that have opted out of the school system completely. I know a bunch who are probably online here and words out around through different media. So when will we have a final count on what our final count is for our student population? You know, what's their deadline for kind of letting us know that they won't be attending? So we can maybe have different numbers to work with in class sizes and so on. Is there a deadline for parents or is it just whenever?
No, I, our plan is to communicate cohorts on Monday.
Okay.
Building-based plans by the 21st and then get a commitment on, on a final count. We needed to first have this meeting to figure out what our plans were.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Kissel, the, you know, I have received some homeschool applications for people who are opting for homeschool. And I'm, I'm calling those parents individually to alert them to the possibility of TECA or Greenfield. Many of our students who are homeschooled, some of the parents actually purchase online learning platforms and they don't need to do that. It's, it's high-quality, remote possibilities that are being offered by the state that they can access. So they don't need to unenroll with us to access those. Pat, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment regarding that?
Lipsett.
I am very, very uncomfortable with the idea of what would essentially be outsourcing our instruction to teachers through virtual learning academies, simply because we are in a hybrid model and can't meet the staffing needs that we have. And that is essentially what we would be talking about here. I understand the administration's under incredible strain and I understand that Desi has made these available to us. But to me, allowing our parents who are staying within the Woburn Public Schools, not speaking of parents who are choosing to homeschool, but parents who are remaining within the Woburn Public Schools, to opt for teachers who are not Woburn Public School teachers to deliver instruction as part of our curriculum, makes me very uncomfortable. I do not like the idea that we are unable to meet the needs of our students. And to me, if that's what hybrid means, and that's a, that's a real risk that we run in a hybrid, in a hybrid model, that, that is a very big point for me against such a model. If we cannot meet our staffing needs, to me, that tells us that we should be looking in a different direction.
Madam Chairman?
Dr. Wells?
Yeah, I didn't see it as we couldn't meet their needs. I saw it more as we were offering them different opportunities. I think we, we can make their needs, but we're trying to give them more opportunity.
So the program would be voluntary, Ms. Gregg, the program would be, you could choose?
So we haven't decided on any, any program. There, there were two options that were provided to us, the two that Dr. Baldassari met, mentioned. But there are also two others that would be staffed by our teachers. And, and they would be course-driven or semester-driven. So if, if we know that there are students that are going to be out, instead of bouncing them through another schedule, the idea is for consistency for them, looking at that for them, but with our staff. Again, that, excuse me, that decision, it's getting late, until we know how many students are opting for that and how many teachers we have that may be able to teach remotely.
Okay, so, so just for my own clarity here, are we saying that should no family opt for this, there isn't a likelihood that we would have to use such programs? That these could be completely optional for parents? Or are we in a situation right now where this might be Or are we in a situation right now where this might become necessary to use for our families in order to meet our needs under a hybrid model? If we don't have the numbers that we are looking for in terms of staff who are choosing remote, or families who are requesting such a program? Does that make sense? Is this, is this a program, is this a program that would be one of need or one of convenience, option?
I would say it would be need.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Malrennen.
Thank you very much, Ellen. To the superintendent, I know he's, beginning of his presentation this evening, and again, remind the audience that still with us, that those were sample hybrids, sample schedules, sample cohorts, samples, slides that he presented this evening. So obviously, as we say all the time, it's a work in progress. And I think it's a good time for tonight, the superintendent could, we have one timeline, student starting date. And if he had any other dates that he'd like to put out there for those that are still with us, as reminders to people that, you know, again, to the homeschooling effort or whatever, people have options available. You know, it's just a common courtesy to let the school department know, you're gonna opt out, you're gonna opt in, or you like it, or you don't like it, it's just so we can continue our planning. But I know we have a start date for the students from the superintendent. Any other important dates you'd like to relay to the audience at this time?
My intent is to release a thorough plan to the public tomorrow, predicated on the outcome of tonight's meeting. On August 17th, Monday, parents will be informed of what cohort their students are going to be placed into. And on August 21st, parents would be made aware of the building-based plan of their child's school.
And the start date for students, whatever plan or whatever model we go with, Dr. Crowley?
Is September 16th currently.
Thank you, thank you for that update, appreciate it.
Okay, any more questions? Ms. Bragg, when would we know for sure about what platform we would use for high, for a remote-only kids? This platform that, that wouldn't involve the supervision of teachers? When would those numbers?
I don't, I don't know exactly when we would get an accurate count for students and teachers at this point, so I don't want to give you a date that we can meet that and give you the answer that you're asking for.
Okay, and it wouldn't be replacing our teachers, it would be supplementing?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So at the high school, if there's a chemistry teacher that's unable to teach.
Yeah.
Finding a sub chemistry that is going to be able to teach the content to the level it needs to be taught.
Right.
But that's only if our staff is unable to do that.
That's right, okay, so it's, it's just, I understand, it's a supplement to these kind of specialized areas where there's not a lot of teachers that are sort of, that are skilled in that, in that area. Okay, I understand that, I appreciate it, thank you. So at this point, so you want to just take a few minutes and, and kind of talk about where we are with this? Do, do people want to go one by one about what their position is or where they're leaning?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to go hybrid. Let's work on the motion.
All right.
Second.
There's a second, so there's a motion to accept the superintendent's plan for a hybrid learning model. So is there any discussion on that motion?
On the motion, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, obviously, this is a difficult decision. Obviously, there's risk involved in doing this, but there's also risk in everything we do in life. But I think at this stage, the state, where the state of the Commonwealth and the state of Woburn is with regard to COVID-19, I think this is the logical choice. I think the superintendent summed it up best. This is gonna be a flexible plan that can be changed, depending on changes in circumstances. I've heard people talk about we should go remote and then see what's happening. I think if anything, situation will get worse rather than get better. And so I think if we don't go now, I don't know when we'll go. And again, I'm still not clear exactly when we'll ever be in person. And so I think this is the time to see if we can be done. I know people have talked about what's happened in other parts of the country, Georgia specifically. But I think we have to remember, the, the caseload there, when they opened school, was much different than it is in Woburn. I, I think the superintendent and his team has done an excellent job of trying to develop a plan that will keep people safe, but also try to maximize the education for our children. I think if we don't try this plan, I think we're not ever gonna be able to say that we're gonna have a, a school system, because I'm very concerned about how we're ever gonna go back to school in the new normal, because once we get the vaccine, people think that's gonna be a cure-all. But there are gonna be people that aren't gonna take the vaccine. There may be problems to be down the road. But I think right now with the state of the Commonwealth and the state of Massachusetts, this seems like the best option for our students. And I'm gonna support the superintendent's hybrid plan, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Mr. Liveset. Sure, thank you.
This is an incredibly tough decision, and as I've been thinking over my vote, I did write down a few things, so if the committee will indulge me, I'm gonna read a short.
Of course, Ms. Liveset.
Thank you. From the moment this crisis began, almost five months ago, the dedication and work of our entire team, custodial staff, teachers, cafeteria workers, administrators alike, has been beyond reproach. I'm a teacher, and I know how hard this spring was on everyone. I want to particularly thank our teachers who worked so hard under intensely difficult personal and professional circumstances to deliver education and support for our kids. Dr. Crowley, with the support of Ellen and the student committee, you and your team have faced the most difficult set of decisions anyone working in education has had to make. And you've created a thoughtful plan to address our return to school despite many obstacles. But I'm continually reminded though, that many of those obstacles you face should not have been there. We have been met with a failure of leadership at the federal and state levels that has forced us to face a global pandemic and its fallout largely on our own. Because of this, even given the extraordinary job you all have done, I can't support a plan that puts all of our students back into school under a hybrid model at this time. Rather, a phased-in model provides us with the safety nets and assurances that we need far better than an immediate return to school can. Here's what we face without safety nets, that Congress and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, among others, could have provided but didn't. Without aid for struggling families, parents are forced to choose between work and children who need them. Without a plan for providing for additional transportation, physical resources, and staffing, districts have to work at the margins of what is possible, given our current limitations. Without in-school testing, we are unable to monitor our, our own health and avoid larger outbreaks. And I'm speaking here of COVID-19 testing. Without clear instructions and with ever-shifting goalposts, leadership has had to revise on the fly. In fact, only today, Desi and the governor released new guidance using just one single arbitrary metric to recommend opening plans to districts, amazingly after most of our districts had already voted on their plans. These are not our failures, but they are the hand we've been dealt. Because of this, we now risk the terrible side effect of forcing our teachers, our parents, our administrators, and our school committees in opposition and blame when all we, when we all want the same thing, a safe return to in-person education. While it's clear the children are at far lower risk of death and severe health outcomes from this disease, we still cannot fully measure their ability to contract and spread COVID-19. Early reports from schools that have opened in other parts of the country suggest that it is more transmissible than we might have known. And Dr. Wells makes a good point, that this is not Georgia, this is not Arizona. But we also know that this disease does not recognize borders, it does not recognize boundaries. If it is transmissible there, it is transmissible here. Without the ability to conduct in-school COVID-19 testing, we run the risk of further spread. We must have ample resources to conduct our tests as needed. While debates over school reopening have increased, we have continued to prioritize, as a state, reopening of bars, restaurants, theaters, thus making additional spread more likely, not less. Beyond health risks, what I worry about the most are the logistics. As a teacher, I'm well aware that under the best of circumstances, things in schools rarely go according to plan. But under the best of circumstances, we often have safety nets that we will not have this year, leading to the potential for operational problems that could cause significant hardships for our school community. Many of our public participants tonight brought up these issues. The unpredictable nature of education, coupled with the unpredictable nature of this pandemic, gives me great pause. There is, as we've heard so much that we don't know, our substitute availability, transportation, health facilities, and possibly even lunch plans, despite the best efforts of our administrators and our staff, leave little room for error. We've done the very best with what we have, but we do not have enough. Given all of this, we have the understanding that now, more than ever reasonable people will disagree. A model in which all of our students fit in school, even in a hybrid system, is too risky at this time. A phased-in structure would allow, would enable us to provide in-person education to students who need it the most, while bringing back the rest of our students slowly, providing the ability to monitor health indicators and handle logistical problems as they arise. It would allow us to weigh additional data, and hopefully to assess further evidence-based local and federal guidance, while slowly building capacity and meeting benchmarks. It would allow us to focus our staff and resources towards providing the strongest remote instruction, mental health support, and social-emotional programming possible for students who will struggle to adjust and socialize, no matter the model we're in. It gives us what nothing else has so far, a workable safety net for our kids. Challenges remain. As a parent, I too am struggling with providing childcare in the fall. We have students who will struggle with isolation under any remote system, and children who face myriad other needs that our schools have helped provide for them in the past. But I believe that with the support and partnership of the city, these are not insurmountable problems. We can deliver both safety and support for our families and our students under a phased-in model, and I urge you to consider this as an option before us. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I, Dr. Wells's, his motion is for a hybrid model to start on September 16th. So we're, we're arguing on that motion. I, I assume that if that motion fails, Mr. Liveset will make a separate motion.
That is a safe assumption, thank you.
Okay, thank you, but I appreciate that. Mr. Kissel?
No, I'm sorry, it might be my pen just moving.
Oh, okay. Anyone else like to speak on the motion?
Madam Chairman, I just, I'm trying to understand, and I'm just trying to understand what a phased-in approach would be. It's not clear to me what that means. And so, because I, I've heard talk of it, but I haven't seen anything from the administration talking about a phased-in approach, so I'm not clear exactly how that would work.
Through the chair to Dr. Wells, what I have seen multiple districts go with is a model in which the majority of students start remote. But, so for example, the high-needs students that, that Dr. Baldassari spoke of earlier could be in school either immediately on September 16th, or once we've reached certain benchmarks down the line. And then, as we have worked through some of our issues, as we see numbers improving, we can then bring, for example, younger students who, where, where parents may be struggling with childcare, or who need much more direct in-person, face-to-face instruction, before then moving on to older, older age groups as numbers and as logistics allow. That, that's my view of what a phased-in model means. And, you know, as with hybrid models, there are a billion different, you know, every district has a different one, but that's what I've seen.
Thank you, I appreciate, you know, unfortunately, you know, it sounds like if we did that, the administration would have to develop a fourth plan, because that's not their, one of their plans. They have hybrid and remote. And I'm just concerned that it would just add more planning time into what they're doing to try to, where we'd have the special needs students come in, but nobody else, and then be working on how we're gonna get the other students in. So that's just, that's one of my concerns about a new plan at this point.
Maybe what Ms. Liveset is suggesting is that we could direct the superintendent to, to maybe come up, we would adopt the hybrid plan, but with a delay with a start date. I don't know, I think something like that, I think we could, we could probably do that.
And through the chair to Dr. Wells, I mean, my understanding is that, you know, for our high-needs students, these are already students who are going to be in, in fairly substantially separate environments, where the plans are not necessarily going to go along directly with what we've, what we've created in a hybrid model. So that it wouldn't be, I don't think, and, and, you know, I hope that the administration can correct me if I'm wrong, it wouldn't be a massive amount of rebuilding to bring our high-needs students in first, then transition into older students or other students as we go.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the plan as is. I'm anticipating that maybe there'll be another motion to amend the plan at some later date. But I would like to speak to Dr. Wells.
Madam Chair, could I just speak on this for a minute? I just, at the commissioner's meeting today, he did speak about a level of what would put you into hybrid and what would put you into remote, and anything over 5%, and we're at 1.8 in Woburn. So he, along with the governor, recommended anybody below four should be in school. He actually wanted to push for kids to be totally in school. I think that's a little bit over the top at this point. But I think that this hybrid, you know, at least to start to do it, we're in a good spot right now, as even the mayor had said, that the numbers here in Woburn are looking good. So I think we need to, and as Dr. Wells said, we have to jump back into education the way we kind of thought it was gonna be, and kids expected it to be. It's gonna be different, but I think it's gonna be different for the entire year. I think we're gonna have some changes that the kids are gonna have to be accustomed to. And so I think that that's, that's a benchmark that they've put out there today in that meeting, that anything over five, we might need to have to go back to remote learning. But right now, that's not here in Woburn, so hopefully we'll stay well. That's, that's my three cents.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm, Mr. Malrennen?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you for that. I probably sound a little strange saying this, but I will be endorsing the hybrid plan, and I'm actually looking forward to it, with all that's been going on behind the scenes and all the work that's been done, and all the work that's gonna get done before that start date for our students and our families. To the mentioning of, you know, remote learners, if people choose to go remotely and use one of those other platforms, that's their option. But I think there's enough work, the hybrid plan is gonna be offered, there's gonna be tweaked for the next couple of weeks before they open the doors up, and that's what we're here for, to open the doors and educate the kids as best we can in a safe, convenient, clean environment, which will be this plan. And again, if we have to change it, by whatever standard or recommendation we have, we can change it as needed, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Malrennen. Ms. Cormier, Mr. Kissel?
Comments? I didn't have my hand up, but just in general, I mean, this is obviously an extremely tough decision overall. Talking to parents and, and families and, and people in the city, it's, you know, it's a little bit of everything. Getting people that have reasons why they'd go fully remote, and reasons why they're good with hybrid, and ones that actually say they want to go back full. Which again, to Pat, Mrs. Chisholm's comment, I, I think that might be a little, little much right now. It'd be a good opportunity to start with the hybrid, a little bit of both, and see where we're at. But this decision is obviously one that no one's really dying to, to make a decision on. So I guess we just, we'll see, but I probably will be supporting the hybrid at this, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Liveset.
I'm, I'm seeing the way the debate is going, but I'm going to offer an amendment to the motion on the table to introduce a phased-in model to our hybrid model, where we would begin with our high-needs students, and through benchmarks that can be set by the administration, bring back other students as both conditions, logistic and time permit.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I've, if, you know, and I understand Mr. Liveset's motion, and, you know, I, I do believe that maybe a staggered opening, as I mentioned, might be good. But I'm just concerned that if we don't have parameters provide how we're gonna bring people back, that it's not clear to me that we'll ever go from not, not having students in the class. You have to set up the parameters to when the students could come back. I, you know, you could keep making the goalposts move farther down the road, and if we don't have standards, it's not clear to me how the admin, you know, how the administration would make the change, because there's always gonna be things that we're gonna have to worry about, transportation, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, you know, without setting the standards before we start this, I'm not sure how the administration would get us back to the hybrid plan, since they haven't been working on it for, you know, the last month, two months or so. That's, that's my concern with that approach.
Through, through the chair to Dr. Wells, I certainly, I hear that concern. My understanding was, and, and is, that we could set dates through which we would advance to the next stage of a phased-in model, assuming that... model, assuming that our numbers continue in the right direction, our logistics match what we want them to do. And then if we arrive at that point or close to that point, and it appears that we are not moving in the right direction, then we can continue where we are or backtrack. But a phased-in model, to me, allows us that flexibility, in some ways, more than a hybrid plan does. My concern with a hybrid plan immediately is that we are putting all of our students back in and potentially stressing a system where, as I've said, we simply don't have a safety net, not through any fault of our administration, not through any fault of our teachers, not through any fault of our staff, but because of the nature of this pandemic and the nature of the response that we operate under. A phased-in model, I think, allows us that flexibility, allows us those safety nets more than an immediate hybrid return would. And I share your concern. I mean, I think, you know, I think sort of the unspoken secret here, and we've heard this a little bit today, is that we are expecting a spike in the fall. Is it better if we are exposing our students and our teachers and their families to that before making a pivot to, to remote when we have to? Or is it better if we are phasing people in slowly and then realizing that we can either move forward with it or move back? If we go full hybrid now, we are going to have all of our students, all of our teachers, all of our families engaged in the school community, risking that spread when the numbers or if the numbers go south. Under a phased-in hybrid plan, that would not be the case. So that, just to sort of speak to your concerns on the amendment motion.
So Madam Chairman, maybe at this time, it might be good to hear from the administration because maybe they've considered this plan and they have, why they didn't include it.
So there's a motion, and Mr. Lipsit offered an amendment on the motion, but that amendment has not been seconded. So are we, are we just talking about Dr. Wells's motion? I just see some clarity on the procedure.
Yes, we, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. It needs to have a roll call vote on that.
But I could, you know, before we, he does the amendment, I'll ask the administration to comment on the phased-in approach.
No, that's fine. I agree. I just wanted to make sure that when we vote, we're voting on Dr. Wells's motion, not Miss Wells's motion. His amendment wasn't seconded.
Correct.
Correct.
Dr. Crowley, do you have any input into whether you've considered a phased-in hybrid approach?
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak to it. We haven't given a great thought, but to Dr. Wells's comment or to Mr. Lipsit's comment, I forget which, because of the flexibility of our plan, it's something that we could do. We have that capacity. One of the things that I, as I'm listening to, you know, is this sort of, you've heard me talk about this in budget and other, you know, to be thoughtful about our approach. One of the questions I have, and I think Dr. Wells raised it and Mr. Lipsit asked is, you know, the administration sets the benchmarks, and that's where I don't know the answer candidly. The state provided us benchmarks today, and so I'm not clear what the benchmarks would be to move from one step to the next, candidly. And so, could we do it? Absolutely. We can do, we can do hybrid, we can do remote, we can do a phased-in. We can do almost anything to provide a back-to-school experience for our teachers. I guess, I just don't, I don't, I need clarity as to what the benchmarks would look like, what the timelines you'd be seeking, et cetera, before I could really be thoughtful about a response.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Malrennen, I'm going to ask you to take the chair, because I'm going to make a brief, brief statement, because it's such an important issue.
Please do, Madam Chair. I accept the chairmanship as you have your brief moment to sign.
Thank you. I'm in support of the hybrid model, just a different lens. I'm a foster parent, as well as a legal aid attorney that works with children that are at risk. I'm very concerned that children have not been visible in the community for over six months in our school buildings. School buildings provide children with authentic in-person relationships with teachers. A lot of those teachers are mandated reporters. A lot of our children have suffered trauma during this time. I'm concerned about children that are going through issues like domestic violence, housing instability, mental health issues, and are just not adjusting well. The school, the obviously in-person education provides those students with that, that in-person interaction. It's not just about, oh, kids need friends. No, kids really need peer interactions in order to develop pro-social behaviors and really learn things like empathy and inclusion. And I, and I just feel like it's, it's the best model to really provide that and get kids back in the community, back visual, back in visibility, so we can see what's going on with them. Remote learning will divide along socioeconomic lines. I think like we'll lose children, it'll be hard to keep them engaged, gauged, aged. I am really scared of what will happen to kids if we don't have in-person interactions. So that being said, I will be supporting that through that lens. Thank you.
I'll say, Madam Chair?
Yes. Well, I'm not Madam Chair, though.
Oh, you are Madam Chair now, unless you have any other comments?
No, you have to keep the vote.
Keep it until the vote, Mike.
Call, roll call.
You have to follow the vote.
I will call a vote of Dr. Wells. Please repeat your motions with the audience and Jean McClellan.
My motion is to accept the administration hybrid plan.
Motion by Dr. Wells to accept the superintendent's hybrid plan for Woburn Public Schools moving forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Thirty seconds.
Second by, second by Mrs. Chisholm. Roll call vote, please, Dr. Crowley.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Reluctantly and with the most respect for our school administration, I have to vote no.
Mr. Malrennen?
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes six to one. At this time, I will return the chair to Madam Ellen Crowley to finish off the meeting of tonight's school committee.
Yes, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, obviously, there's, you know, no one answer that anybody has for this. And truly appreciate all the input from the parents, you know, Mr. Lipsit's ideas. I think, you know, we're good and stimulating and so forth for the discussion because no one has the truly right answer. We're going to have to see how, what nature brings to us. I do appreciate the administration's desire to have a flexible plan so they can shift at a moment's notice, depending on what's happening in the city and so forth. But I think this is probably one of the harder things to try to determine what to do as a school committee member, because there's so many unknowns. And I just appreciate all the input from teachers, parents, my neighbors, and other school committee members. And like I said, you know, we don't know what the future will bring, but I think we can all work together now that we've sort of set the plan, and the administration will flesh it out more. And then let's see where we go. And let's be as supportive as we can to everybody and make sure that everybody is as safe as possible and that education can occur as best as possible. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Can't emphasize enough.
I'm sorry, can I just briefly add?
Of course, go ahead.
Though I was the only no vote this evening, I 100% concur with Dr. Wells. And now that we have voted on the plan we are moving forward with, that is our plan. And it is our, our role as school committee members to support the administration in carrying it out and doing everything that we need to make sure that our kids and our families have the best experience that we could possibly provide them. Thank you.
I just want to state that the, the safety of our staff is absolutely paramount. There's a lot of talk about what children need, but we do have to negotiate with our staff and our teachers to set policies that are going to keep them safe. So a lot of the details need to be worked out. We have a lot of work to do, and I, and I am very excited to actually work with our teachers' union. If I stated wrong, I want to reiterate that the, the union survey reflected a 63% preference for remote. I don't know if I, if I stated that correctly. So we will be working with that, with our unions and our bargaining units to come up with some really good MOAs to keep everybody safe. That's our absolute number one goal here. So moving on, we do have executive session for the purpose of strategy and collective bargaining. So I will set a motion to go into executive session.
Is this for staff, for teachers?
Yes, this will be collective bargaining, and this will be the WTA.
Okay, so I won't be able to join.
Make a motion, Madam Chair. We go into the executive session for the purposes as you stated.
Can I just interrupt for one minute? Do we have another school committee meeting prior to opening of school? I don't want to put the administration on overload, but you think we should do something prior to, just to kind of bring everybody on, you know, and let people join in?
I do. I think that, I want to correct the public perception that we had kind of an outline of a plan, and then we just approved it. We, there will be a nitty-gritty, there will be very specific protocols. All we were doing is just approving that we are reopening our buildings on September 16th. But we do intend to have a very, superintendent will release a very comprehensive plan, and perhaps we should have a meeting on that in case there are any changes to what we are envisioning tonight, any drastic changes. So that being said, I do think we should have a, a meeting, maybe at the end of August.
Well, August 25th is a Tuesday. We just have to make sure we clear it with Mr. Malrennen and Ms. Cormier.
Let's, um.
Why don't you send out an email? And we'll do that later. I just wanted to make sure that people don't know.
I would really appreciate that. Because I want to see, you know, we're going to be, we'll be busy.
Yes.
So.
SSA next time as well.
Okay.
All right. This way we don't put a burden on the administration for something that they're not ready to present if we book something now, but if they can give us an idea, and you can throw out a couple of dates to us.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so let's.
I'll second Mr. Malrennen's motion for the purposes.
Moving to exec, roll call vote.
Madam Chair, on the motion?
Yes.
I just have to announce that I am a member of another teachers' union. I do understand that that could provide some with the appearance of a conflict of interest. I have checked with our state ethics commission, and I have placed a letter on file with the city clerk stating that I believe that I can fulfill my obligations as an elected member of the Woburn School Committee without bias, despite the, despite the perception that some may have that there will be one.
Thank you. It's very thorough. Appreciate it. Come on in. All right, so now move to exec. Everybody could, that's not a school committee member or a member of the administration.
Do a roll call, right?
Yes, roll call.
And we all take a roll call vote in the meantime.
Ms. Chisholm?
Oh, you'll miss me, I know.
Ms. Cormier?
In favor.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
Yes, please.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Crowley?
Yes.
If I may, in the meeting, Ms. Crowley, I just want to thank the many hundreds of people that were on the call tonight. This isn't fun for anybody. We're not making, you know, a great choice. We know that. And, you know, we're making the best decision with the information we have right now. So again, appreciate the support, patience, and kindness. And I believe together that we'll get through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley.